Welcome to the Fortuna City Council meeting for Monday, December 16th. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unafraid, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Proten Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Okay, we have some introductions. Our first one is new utility worker two.
I'm Jason Johnson, the utilities superintendent. I'm here to introduce Mike McGinnis.
I'm Mike McGinnis. I'd like to say thank you to the city council and Jason and Brendan Baird for the opportunity to come work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the city. Our next one is introduction of new bus driver two.
Good evening. As you can imagine, I'm very excited to be here to introduce our new bus driver, and he is here this evening. I'm pleased to introduce our newest transit driver, William Minkle. Bill, as he likes to be called, brings a wealth of driving experience, including passwork with Valley Transportation Authority in San Jose, California, as a coach operator. So in that position, he drove bus, he worked with passengers, he took fare. He also has experience in hydraulic lift and assisting disabled riders, all of things which will be very useful in his work with us. So he's also, has lived in Fortuna for 20 years, so knows the area very well, which will also serve him and our riders. So please join me in welcoming Bill to our team.
Our next one is introduction of new community service officer.
Good evening, Mayor Trent and Honorable City Council. It's a pleasure to be here before you this evening. We have two exciting introductions, actually one's technically a reintroduce, a reintroduce, a reintroduction, but we'll get to that in a second. I'd like to invite Wyatt McKnightup. So Wyatt is our newest community service officer. We hired Wyatt back in October, and the police department really wanted to kind of highlight this new CSO that we've welcomed into the police department because he was actually one of our original police explorers. So that was a new program that we re-implemented in the department back in 2023. Wyatt came, he served us well as an explorer and has hit the ground running as our part-time community service officer. A little about Wyatt. Wyatt was born and raised here in Fortuna. He's a graduate of Fortuna High, and Wyatt has always had a strong desire to work in public safety. He's already, him and I have already spoken, he has set his sights early on on obtaining a sponsorship from the city of Fortuna and, you know, attending the academy when he turns 21. So we're really proud of Wyatt. We have high hopes for him. Wyatt has also expressed the positive influences that those in the public safety community locally have had on him. He enjoys the challenges of his new position as our part-time CSO, and, you know, Wyatt's still pretty young, but he expressed to me that he wants to make a career out of working for the city of Fortuna and the Fortuna Police Department. So again, we're extremely proud of Wyatt. He's hit the ground running. He's a great model for the Fortuna Police Department and what that position entails. And I would just like to invite the council and our community and his family to invite us in welcoming Wyatt to the city of Fortuna.
Okay, our next introduction, an oath of office and pinning of new police officer.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Trent, Honorable City Council. I'd like to invite Carly Humphrey up to the podium. So following a short reintroduction, we will perform a short badge-pinning ceremony, and then I will ask the city clerk to come down and administer the oath of office. So as I said, I would like to reintroduce our newest police officer, Carly Humphrey. Carly was originally hired by the city as a kennel attendant back in February of 2023. She was promoted quickly to part-time community service officer in June of '23 and was promoted again to officer trainee in June of 2024. Carly recently graduated from the 134th Basic Academy at CR on December 12th. And a little bit about Carly, she was born and raised here in Humboldt. She grew up in Bloxburg, graduated from South Fork High in Miranda, and then went to work at the bootleg in Garberville for our supervisor, Michelle Bushnell. Carly is a devoted mother. She loves everything about the outdoors, hiking, camping, fishing, hunting, and has completed college-level coursework in both biology and psychology. Her goal is to obtain a bachelor's degree in both of those areas. Her hope is also to be a canine officer for the Fortuna Police Department one day. And we are truly proud of Carly. I mean, all she has accomplished in a short amount of time, going from kennel attendant to CSO to full-blown sworn officer. So please help me in welcoming Carly to the department as our newest police officer.
Okay, yeah, I'm really, I'm gonna move closer. Okay, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me.
Of course.
I state your name.
I, Carly Humphrey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys, mostly you know me already. I'm back. It's been a long six months at the academy, and I'm just so grateful to be back home. And I feel so honored and blessed to be a part of the Fortuna Police Department. So I can't wait to get out there and start serving the community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We're very excited to have you and welcome to Fortuna. Next, we have oral comments from the public. Anybody would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda? This would be the time. Okay, see and none. We'll move to the consent calendar. We have all the department reports and declare the canvas and return the results of the general municipal election held December 5th and review the, review and approve the mayor's recommendations for appointments to the historical commission and Fortuna business improvements. Does anybody want to pull any of those? See and none, do we have a motion on those?
Do you need a comment?
We just had oral comments for consent.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent moves. Moving to council business. Our first item of business is authorize a city manager to establish the PARs 115 trust and execute a 850,000 supplemental budget request for an additional discretionary payment to the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS pension trust. The PARs Pension 115 Trust Resolution 2024-38. Staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So before I get into staff's recommendation, I just wanted to give the council a little bit of background on the CALPERS unfunded liability and where the city of Fortuna currently stands. So as, just a reminder, some of the goals that the city has set in previous planning sessions, the first one is to be proactive in managing the city's unfunded liability. I'm going to show some slides on how the city council in the past being proactive has really benefited the city, and so we want to continue to be proactive in managing the city's unfunded liability. The second goal is to smooth future mandated unfunded liability payments so that we don't have a sudden jump in payments that we have a hard time finding funding sources for. And then the final one is to incorporate the information from tonight and to use it as we move forward into our mid-year budget and special budget workshops. So this is where the city currently stands as far as unfunded liability. The current discount rate The current discount rate, which is what PERS anticipates earning over the next 10, 20 years at 6.9%, would have the city of Fortuna at about a $10.5 million essentially debt to CAL-PERS that we need to pay back. 70% of that is attributable to the general fund. So that's about $7.3 million that the general fund needs to, you know, pay back to PERS to be 100% funded on our pension liabilities. And then there's two scenarios. Scenario one is if CAL-PERS only earns 5.9%. And then there's scenario two, if CAL-PERS earns 7.9%. And so you can see kind of how that affects plus or minus about $5 million depending on, on what CAL-PERS earns. So this shows our projected unfunded liability payments. This current year, we paid about $800,000. And you can see in fiscal year '31, '32, which is not too far away, it'll go up to $1.3 million. So that is an additional $500,000 that we will need to try and come up with. And so trying to find monies now to put into and invest to help lower those payments in the future is a goal of the city's. And I will also point out that this would be about $300,000 higher if the city had not made additional discretionary payments in fiscal year '21, '22, and '22, '23. So those have gone a long way to helping reduce the peak fiscal years as far as unfunded liability payments is concerned. And then this shows the city of Fortuna, we're currently funded at 76%. And this is all of the kind of entities in Humboldt County. So the three dots to the right are Arcade, Eureka, and Humboldt County. And you can see we're funded at a higher ratio than they are. And then there's a bunch of kind of smaller entities to the left. And then the one entity that is above the city of Fortuna is the Arcade Fire Protection District. And that's because they only have one miscellaneous employee. So it's a little bit easier for them to maintain a higher funded status. So I point this out just to show, one, that the city of Fortuna is doing a good job, but we also still have about 24%. We do want to be at, you know, close to that 100% funded ratio. So we still have room to, to, to continue to work on this. So the council should be fairly, you know, kind of up to date on what the benefits are of the additional discretionary payments as we've made those, a couple of those over the last few years. But I wanted to touch on the PARs 115 trust. And so a couple of, a few of the benefits are that the city's distributions into the trust are discretionary as to time and amount. And so this provides flexibility. You know, we don't have to commit to anything. Anything we put into the, into the PARs 115 trust will grow and we can make distributions as the council sees fit. One of the advantages of the PARs 115 trust versus paying PERS with an additional discretionary payment is that the city could take an investment approach that ranges from conservative to more aggressive. And so there's five strategies available. And I'll, I'll touch on those five strategies. When we send monies to PERS, it's just one strategy. It's their, it's kind of, you know, just the CAL-PERS investment strategy and that's really the only option we have. The second difference between the PARs 115 trust and CAL-PERS is that if we put funds to the PARs 115 trust, the city maintains local control. And so distributions from the trust can be made, can be made for any pension-related expense. Whereas if you send money to PERS, PERS keeps it. There's no, there's no getting it back. And then the final point for the PARs 115 trust is that the average return has been 6.39% over the last 10 years. And so that is a greater return that can be achieved through, than, through the city's investment policy and practices. And as a reference, BLAF, the Local Agency Investment Fund, which we currently invest a large portion of the city's funds into, has earned 1.58% over the last 10 years. So a pretty big difference. Just a few other points to be aware of. So for reporting purposes, any funds put into the PARs 115 trust will be an indirect offset on the city's balance sheet. So as I showed, the pension was currently funded at 76%. This will not change that. So just something to be aware, it'll be a separate line item that shows an asset. It won't directly increase the funded status as far as PERS is concerned. And then we, the plan does require a 0.25% PARs trust administration fee and a 0.35% investment management fee. As I'll show on a future slide, those are offset by increased investment earnings that PARs has, has generated over the last 10 years. And then just one other point. So the 115 trust distributions can be made for any pension-related reason as I stated before. And so this does mean that future distributions from the trust could be made towards the normal cost and not the, not towards the city's unfunded liability. So it's just something to be aware of. So I think outside of the benefit of having control over the PARs 115 trust versus sending it to PERS, this is really the second area of benefit. And that is the different investment options and the potential to earn more than what could be earned with CAL-PERS. And so there are, there are five different investment strategies that you, the city council can choose through PARs. These are the last 10 years' average return. And this does include the fee taken out. So the capital appreciation earned, 8.69%. 0.6%, 0.6% comes out for the fee. So the end result is 8.09%. And then you kind of go down balanced, 7.23, moderate, 6.39, moderate, conservative, 4.67, and conservative, 3.37. And so you can see how those relate to CAL-PERS, who's earned 6.2% on average over the last 10 years, and BLAF at 1.58%. And so staff in our, as part of our recommendation, is recommending the moderate strategy, but council could choose a more aggressive approach with the balanced or capital appreciation or a less aggressive approach with moderate, conservative, or conservative. And so where do, where would this money come from to pay into the, the trust and to pay an additional discretionary payment to PERS? And so staff's recommendation is to use a large portion of fiscal year '23, '24's investment returns that exceeded budget. And so you can see we've had historically high returns as the federal fund, federal fund rate has been at all-time highs. And so we've earned close, BLAF average was 1.58%. We've been up to about 4.5% with BLAF. However, we don't anticipate that continuing for very much longer. So it is being recommended that we reinvest the excess investment earnings from last fiscal year and invest them in the PARs 115 trust or directly with PERS with an additional discretionary payment. And so staff's recommendation is to put $250,000 towards an additional discretionary payment to PERS and $600,000 be deposited in the PARs 115 trust. And this shows the breakdown of which fund those funds would come from. So about $562,000 would come from the general fund. And just going back real quick, one slide. So you can see the general fund had about, a difference of about $564,000. So that was really the limiting factor when we were trying to come up with how much to put towards our unfunded liability payments. And so that brought us to the total of about $850,000. That could be broken up however council sees fit between an additional discretionary payment and the PARs 115 trust. And so that does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
How do we decide how much to allocate?
Do you mean between PARs and the additional discretionary payment?
Yeah, because we're taking the, it looks like we're taking the maximum amount and allocating it. And I'm just wondering, how did you come up with the percentages? And is there a minimum amount that we can do? Or did you go for the full amount, a mid amount, low amount? Is what I'm trying to determine.
As far as the $850,000 in total?
Yes.
Yeah, I just went, I want, the intention was just to reinvest all of our excess investment earnings from last year. And so I just went with the highest amount. You could do less, you could do more, but then you'd be pulling from reserves. So this was really funds that we did not anticipate earning last year that we earned. And so now we're just wanting to pull them right back out and reinvest them.
And they're not included anywhere in our budget at all for the upcoming year?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I know we think about passbook accounts and mutual funds and that kind of thing. But as I understand it now, we're limited as to what we can invest in. And like, that's why this is a trust and it's permitted by the state of California.
Yes, so government code does highly kind of limit and stipulate what government entities can invest in just on our own. And so the trust program was really set up so that we could invest into the stock market. As a city, we can't really do that unless, unless we invest through a trust or some other entity, so.
And then if some, something untoward happens, we, this is liquid. We can get the money back, utilize it.
As long as, as it's for any pension-related costs and that can be normal cost and we, we always have hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have to pay to PERS every year. So we could, we would always be able to find a way to utilize it if we needed it.
Okay.
Amy?
Just a, just a comment. I told Amy I wouldn't say a whole lot. With regard to PERS, many years ago, well, several years ago, they projected a percentage of, of income at like over 7%. And everybody told them that was not attainable. They could not get that. And guess what? They never did. And so consequently then, to make up the difference, it's fallen back on the cities, the counties, the agencies that are in PERS. That's what, you know, a lot of what we're dealing with. With regard to the PARs 115, I exchanged emails with, with Aaron tonight. And I think for the amount of investment that we would be making of $600,000, the total fees, management and administrative, only comes out to about $3,500. Now that's going to change with regard to the amount of money that we make and, you know, in the future, the return on the investment. But I think that that's a very manageable amount of fees total, especially starting out with, with a large investment of $600,000. That's all I have.
Any questions, Cal? Okay, open up public comment. First, I'll ask Jerry, do you have any questions on, on this at all? Okay, open public comment. Anybody in the public have any comments on this item? C and N will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize city manager to establish the PARs 115 trust and to execute a supplemental budget request in the amount of $850,000 to be paid to the CAL-PERS Pension Trust and PARs Pension 115 Trust to recognize interest payment savings by adopting Resolution 2024-38.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Resolution 2024-38, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna approving the adoption of the Public Agency's Post-Employment Benefits Trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, PARS. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to our next item, we have consider the approval of a supplemental budget request to produce a Fortuna Police Department recruitment video. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, that's right. Good evening, Mayor Trent, Honorable City Council. I'm here to help answer any questions, but I've asked Sergeant Finney to deliver this staff report this evening.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. Sergeant Josh Finney, Fortuna Police Department. I'm here to make the supplemental budget request in the amount of $3,000 out of the general fund reserves for a recruitment video. This is a request that we make with the understanding that the funds will be replaced into the reserves as soon as the next asset forfeiture disbursement is received by the city. The purpose of doing this is Fortuna, like every other city in California, is facing staffing shortages. And most people utilize social media as a matter of seeking job opportunities and what cities look nice and where they like to go. Fortuna currently does not have anything like that. So we feel that using SightSeer Productions to come up with a professional video to post online will be a powerful recruitment tool for the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
I, I have a question on that. Is this mostly just for social media? Is this where the video is going to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and one other question. Do you have any idea when the next dispersment's going to be for asset forfeiture?
I do not. We have not had a date on that at this time. And I'm sure Chief Day could provide a more accurate assessment of how often those payments come out. But at this time, we do not have a date.
Okay. Any other questions from?
What is kind of an amount that we normally get on those asset forfeitures?
I can go ahead and answer that. So the last couple were right around $100,000, a little less, around 90, 90-ish.
Okay. And this is a new way of soliciting people? I, I just, I haven't looked it up. I, I saw this and I'm looking at, thinking, and it makes sense because everything's on social media now.
Yes, having a good overview of the Police Department, the city, why someone would want to work here would be a good recruitment tool for us to post online. And SightSeer Productions specifically because they were the company that did the Every 15 Minutes production, which we got good public reviews on. And they have done the department inspection as well as some defensive tactics. So we'd have all that footage available to us should we decide to go with them.
Okay, perfect.
Would it also be posted on the Police Department website?
Yes, it would.
Are we going to use our officers in the video?
Of course.
Not professional actors?
No, real officers.
They are.
Any other questions from council?
I think it's a great idea. Make sure you get the trails up in the park too, with all the trees and the sun shining through.
Okay. Well, do we have any public comment on this item? C and N will close public comment. And we do, we have a motion on this?
I make a motion to approve the supplemental budget request for $3,000 for production of a police recruitment video.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Our next item of business is introduction and first reading, reading of Ordinance 2024-769, Amending the Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, Zoning Regulations to Add Chapter 17.10, Reasonable Accommodation Policy and Procedures to Find and Find Amendments Exempt from SEQA. Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Trent and Honorable Councilmembers. I am realizing that I happen to have this in PDF form. So that isn't going to be the most beautiful way to present this. Let me, I apologize. Just check real quickly if I have it also available in PowerPoint. I know there's a way to do it in PDF. So if either Ashley or Siana know, it's like Ctrl-I. I can share my screen. It's just you're going to see the whole side. Okay.
You can close that box, the toolbox, though.
Oh, there we go. Oh, that's better. Okay, my apologies. Okay, so here we go. Reasonable accommodations, policy and procedures, zoning code text amendments. This is the wrong. Can we take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You probably, you want to announce it so people can go to the bathroom if they want.
Oh, we're going to take a five-minute recess to get this set up.
Apologies for that. It's kind of confusing when you've done planning commission with the same items the week before, and then you save it, and anyways, so my apologies, apologies, everyone. Let's start over. Reasonable accommodations policy and procedure zoning text amendments. So the city, when I first came here, I was a little bit surprised we didn't have already something in place for folks that are disabled to come and ask for relief from zoning code requirements and that type of thing. And so tonight, the project is to amend the Fortuna Municipal Code Chapter 17 to add a chapter, 17-10, reasonable accommodations policies and procedures, and we're also asking you to determine the amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Sections 15162.
Sherry, can I stop you right there? Can you share your screen?
I think I'm just struggling tonight.
It's all right. It's all right. Hey, it was before, it's, we don't have a full crowd anymore.
Thank God.
It's just us.
Okay, let's make sure this is going to show. Now do you see it? Yep. Okay, woo-hoo. Deep breath. So, the city council adopted the general plan housing element in August of 2019, and the housing element is a required element of the city's general plan. It fulfills state requirements to provide a variety of housing types. As you can see here, that includes multifamily rental housing, regular housing, mobile homes, housing for agricultural employees, and it specifically calls out single-room occupancy units, which we'll hear about with the next item. But part of this means that we're trying to create housing for all, and therefore these types of housing need to be accessible to all folks. This particular project is related to Housing Element Program H18, which requires the development and formalization of a general process for reasonable accommodations. And how this one came to the top of the queue is the California Department of Housing and Community Development reached out to the city and asked where we were at with our housing element implementation. And because there are many, many items that are still outstanding, they gave us sort of a priority list of which ones to, to get accomplished, get through the, through the council and get approved. So this was one of the two that you'll hear tonight that they felt needed to happen right away, which, that's why we're here. So this chapter establishes a procedure for persons with disabilities to, as I mentioned, request reasonable accommodation in applying Fortuna zoning laws, rules, policies, and procedures to ensure equal access to housing pursuant to what are called the acts. And here provides a definition for the acts, which is the Fair Housing Act and the California Fair Employment and Housing Act. Also defined in government code is a person with a disability, and that can be someone who has a physical or mental impairment that limits one or more major life activities, anyone who is regarded as having an impairment, having such impairment, or anyone who has record of such impairment. Now, federal and state fair housing laws do not protect an individual's current unlawful use of controlled substances or other drugs unless that individual, individual has a separate disability. So the request for reasonable accommodation is a request to modify land use, zoning, and building regulations, policies, practices, or procedures in order to give people with disabilities an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. And what that could look like is if a family has a child with sensory issues where they don't feel safe, if they hear loud noises or can see things, it would potentially be somebody applying for a taller fence, something like that. You also see it for ramps, for if somebody has a need for a wheelchair that would potentially put the ramp into a setback that may not be otherwise allowed. So there, the chapter spells out the application requirements, and it includes information such as the applicant's name, the address, the current actual use of the property, the basis for the claim, and the provision, provision, regulation, or policy from which the reasonable accommodation is being requested, and why the reasonable accommodation is necessary to make the specific property accessible to the individual. So as you can see, it's different in every case. What they'll be asking for and the reason for it is different in, in each case. There are additional sections in the chapter that provide a review and procedures, policies, how the decision is made, what somebody could do if there was an adverse decision, and the fact that we will, once it's adopted, post this information on our website and also at the building counter and other places that are accessible to the public. So we brought this to the Planning Commission on December 10th, and they unanimously recommended the project to the city council with no requested changes. And the Planning Commission also found the project to be exempt from further environmental analysis pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 15162 and SEQA Guidelines 15061B3. And the main reason for the first exemption, 15162, is that all of the housing element plans were analyzed at the time of housing element adoption and as part of the general plan. So there's no fiscal impact beyond my salary and the, which is in the general fund budget and the annual legal assistant budget because the attorney, our city on-call attorney, did review the policy to make sure that it was, it was as it should be. So with that, the Planning Commission and the Community Development Department recommend that the council introduce an ordinance to amend Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulations to add Chapter 17.10, reasonable accommodations policy and procedures, and find the amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Sections 15162 and 15061B3. So the next steps would be that it comes to you for a second reading on January 21st, 2025. Upon adoption, staff will file a notice of exemption as required by SEQA, and then the ordinance would be effective 30 days after adoption. And with that, I am here to answer any questions you may have about this. It's important to note that there isn't a lot of leeway in this particular policy. It's pretty much mandated by the state what we need to do, and so this ordinance does follow that.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Who decides that it's reasonable accommodations?
The Community Development Director, which with appeal to the city manager, if there is any.
And what needs to be shown to prove it? I mean, say you have client A and client B come in, they're asking for basically the same thing. What, what is the requirements? Or do we just say, okay, they both, they both comply with this?
So they have to have, I, I went back to the application requirement slide, the basis for the claim that the individual is considered disabled under the acts. So often that'll be a letter from a doctor or a psychologist, psychiatrist, that type of thing, to show that they do meet the definition of a disabled person.
Okay, so we're going to require that. I, I just want to make sure that there's no gray area, that, that one person brings in all their paperwork and the other person just says, "I just don't like my neighbor, I want a 12-foot fence."
Right, no, that would.
So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, they would have to show the basis for the claim, and that is evaluated per person.
Okay, thank you.
Just a real quick question, real quick, even.
Did you talk to him?
What has happened in the past when people have asked for accommodation? Have they ever asked?
I, I asked our building official that question, and he didn't recall any requests for accommodation ever being made.
Okay, thank you. I got one kind of safety-related. I know a lot of times the state will roll back or waive certain rules for certain things, and, but if you're building a wheelchair ramp or a 10-foot fence, those require engineer stamps for, that they're structurally sound, especially the fence and the winds we have, and those are not waived by some state regulation.
That is correct. They still have to meet all life and safety requirements.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open public comment. Anybody in the public like to make a comment on this item? Okay, see, and then we'll close public comment, and do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading by title only of ordinance 2024-769 and continue the public hearing to January 6, 2024, but I thought you said.
Twenty, it's the 6th, 2025.
I thought you, okay, it's not the 21st? Okay, January 6, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-769, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna to amend Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulations to add Chapter 17.10, reasonable accommodations policies and procedures, and find the amendment to be exempt from the additional California Environmental Quality Act review under SEQA Guidelines Sections 15162 and 15061B3. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Our next item is introduction and first reading of ordinance 2024-772, amending the Fortuna Municipal Code Title, Title 17, zoning regulations regarding single-room occupancy facilities and finding the amendments to be exempt from SEQA. Staff report?
Do we see it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Good evening, Mayor Trent and honorable council members. I am Sherry Mead, your Community Development Director. This item is very similar in a sense that it came about because we don't have currently any policies around single-room occupancy facilities, so we are amending, the project is to amend the zoning code to add zoning regulations regarding single-room occupancy facilities, where they can be located, and certain development standards.
Can I interrupt us right there? Is this studio, would this be a studio when you say single room?
I'll explain that when we get to the definitions. Yeah, so, and we're also asking tonight to find the amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act for the same sections, 15162 and 15061B3. So background, city council adopted the housing element on August 7th, 2019, and includes a lot of policies to ensure housing for all. It calls out supportive housing, single-room occupancy units specifically. This is policy H15 that we are addressing tonight, where we are to support the development of housing for extremely low-income households and amend the zoning regulations to allow for SROs to comply with state law. So a definition of a single-room occupancy dwelling unit is a residential dwelling unit located in a SRO facility that has a minimum floor area of 150 square feet for single-person occupancy, 220 square feet for two-person occupancy, and a maximum floor area of 350 square feet. The maximum occupancy tendency can only be two people. So each SRO dwelling unit has to have a closet and a full or partial bathroom. They do not have to have a kitchen, so that's where it's a little bit different than a studio. So if, this defines what a partial bathroom is, that it has to have a toilet and a sink, and that if it is going to be considered a full facility, it has to have a, a means to taking a bath or shower. So an SRO facility, which is what the city will be allowing through this, there is no provision for a single-room, single-room occupancy dwelling unit on its own, so somebody can't build one in their backyard that would potentially not be in a good living situation, that type of thing. So a multifamily residential building that contains at least two single-room occupancy dwelling units, common versus private gathering or open space areas, laundry facilities, a management office, and ancillary facilities needed to maintain the SRO facility. Full cooking, eating, and bathroom facilities shall be provided if each of the SRO dwelling units does not contain them themselves. So the state law requires that SROs be allowed anywhere that residential uses are allowed, so they are going to be principally permitted in multifamily zoning district, RM, the neighborhood commercial zoning district, the retail commercial zoning district, and wherever homeless shelters are allowed. SRO facilities in all zoning districts must comply with the multifamily residential density, open space, and setback requirements. So they'll be allowed, potentially allowed, with an approved use permit, so we would be evaluating if they would be appropriate in the commercial thoroughfare zoning district, the light industrial, heavy industrial zoning districts, and wherever a homeless shelter is allowed with a conditional use permit. Again, as mentioned, they're subject to multifamily residential density, open space, and setback requirements. So the ordinance provides the unit size, as I mentioned earlier, the tendency, what's required for a kitchen, maximum occupancy, the bathroom facilities, closet, that they have to be accessible, that they are required to meet all building code standards. have to be accessible, that they are required to meet all building code standards and other municipal code standards, so they are not creating substandard housing. Additionally, there's information in the ordinance about height, a management plan, bathroom facilities, again, onsite management, parking, including requiring bicycle parking, and common area requirements. Again, this ordinance was evaluated as part of the housing element, and so therefore it doesn't require any new analysis because it doesn't include anything that would potentially cause significantly, that would potentially significantly impact the environment, and then also the 15061b3 exempts projects where it can be seen that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment because the amendments align with the municipal code, they align the municipal code with the general plan, housing element policies, programs, and state regulations. Again, this ordinance preparation was covered, my salary is in the general fund, and then the legal assistance budget for the outside council to review it for appropriateness. On December 10th, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the project to the council with no requested changes. And so the Planning Commission and the Community Development Department recommend that the council introduce an ordinance amending Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17 zoning regulations regarding single-room occupancy facilities and finding the amendments exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guidelines, Sections 15162 and 15061b3. Next steps, second reading, January 6th. I changed that real quick when you guys pointed that out. Again, staff will file a notice of exemption as required by CEQA, and then the policies would be in effect 30 days after adoption. And so I'm here for any questions that you may have. I do want to point out that both of these amendments, and this one specifically, is not amending anywhere else in the code except for the zoning districts where I have to allow them. So you'll see that in red line form, and then it's adding an entirely new set of regulations and, and rules. And I did evaluate as, as, you know, we want to be compliant, but I also want it strict, if you will, in terms of sizes and tenancy and that type of thing, and we can always amend that later if we decide we want them to be bigger or that kind of thing. But for now, I started small.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I do. So the very first part, it said no kitchen facilities, then further, and it did say.
So-
Is it required?
A single-room occupancy dwelling unit itself does not have to have kitchen facilities.
But it has to have a closet.
But it does have to have a closet, but a single-room occupancy facility, which is all we're allowing, requires two units, and the facility itself has to provide communal full kitchen facilities.
Are these state regulations?
Yes.
I mean, I'm assuming we're just taking them from state.
Yes.
Give me an example of where we would put that. Where one would be? Would it be in someone's backyard? Would it be in a commercial location parking lot? Would it, I mean, I'm trying to envision where this would be.
Somebody could convert a home into a, a single-room occupancy facility. They could develop new land with them. I don't imagine, we've never had that come through our area, as far as I know. I can't imagine them being very high moneymakers, but really, they can be, the state requires that they be allowed in any residential zoning district.
So a person that has a house with a substantial backyard, they could literally come to the city and say, "We want to put this in our backyard," and, and that would be okay?
Well, they would have to meet setback requirements, density requirements, and all of that, but technically, yes, they could build an ADU, or if they so chose, build an SRO facility with two units. But there, I mean, it has quite a few requirements. It would have to be a decent-sized lot.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just trying to clarify in my mind how.
Right, yes, yes. Well, and, and, you know, it is a state unfunded mandate, so this is one of the things that HCD highlighted that we needed to put into our code, and the potential for not following HCD guidelines is that our housing element could be decertified, and if that happens, we, we would be subject to fines monthly and lose potential grant opportunities, and even grants we had been approved from, approved for would not have to be funded. And I want to point out to the council that in 2019, the city was involved in litigation for not having a certified housing element, and at that point ended up paying something like $53,000 based on that, hurriedly got a housing element certified, so I don't think we want to go through a decertification process.
Right, and again, I'm not against it.
Right.
I'm just trying to clarify in my mind, and for anyone listening.
Yes.
What that means. Thank you.
Yes, and, and if I may, I do want to add that HCD is fully staffed right now, and they are very, very heavy on the enforcement side at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. What, what makes this where a hotel can't just become a live-in facility if they put in a kitchen in one of the rooms?
They could. Hotels, sometimes you will see hotels or motels turned into SRO facilities. I've seen that in previous jurisdictions that I worked for.
So nothing prevents our hotels from becoming long-stay units where notoriously problems will arise?
Depending where, no, now they're not, it depends. If they're in a residential zone, they're, they would have that opportunity, otherwise they would, depending on the zone that they're in, say if they're a commercial thoroughfare, they would have to go through the conditional use permit process, and all of that would be evaluated. But the state really limits our ability about this.
I was going to say, one of the things that I remember reading was the different zoning areas, and in residential multifamily, it looked like it was principally permitted, but in commercial, commercial thoroughfare, light industrial, and industrial, these, they all required a conditional use permit.
That follows what is required in those zoning districts now for any other type of housing, which, for example, for some of those, it's agricultural housing, would require a conditional use permit, so we can't be more restrictive than what the zone already requires for residential uses.
Right. And then I have to say that the cubic foot rating for the closet and the square footage in the bathroom, I'm surprised anybody can use either one.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this item? C and N, we'll close public comment, and do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading by title only of Ordinance 2024-772 and continue the public hearing to January 6th, 2025.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-772, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna amending Fortuna Municipal Code Title 17 zoning regulations regarding single-room occupancy facilities and finding the amendments to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guidelines, Sections 15162 and 15061b3. Councilmember Conley.
Aye.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Trent.
Yes.
Okay, now at this time, we're going to move the reorganization of the City Council. So the Humboldt County Elections and Voter Registration Office certified the November 5th, 2024 municipal election, and the results were adopted by the council, Resolution 2024-377 in the consent calendar earlier this evening. So we'll start off with Mike. I just wanted to say thank you very much for serving on the council. I very much enjoyed working with you. Mike has served two terms. His first term was from 2010 to 2014, and his second one was from 2020 to 2024, a little break in between, so I'm allowing him a little bit of a break now to travel a little bit, and then he can come back again in a few more years.
Thank you, though.
Only if you take on RCEA again.
So it's always hard when a council member leaves, you know, you get used to working with, working with the council. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't, you know, but I'm glad that we all can work together, you know, for the betterment of our city. So I just want to thank you very, very much for being on the council, and invite other council members if they would like to say anything to Mike.
The only thing I'm going to say is he just threw me to the wolves. And gave me no warning, but I appreciate it.
I don't know, I, I think I gave ample warning. I, anyway.
I would just say that I've known you when you were on the council and I was a staff member, and then as a council fellow council member, and as a fellow RV'er, and talking about RV travels, and it's been good working with you and learning things from you, and I just wish you the best in your second or third round of retirement, whatever it might be this time. I'm sure Lisa's got lots of things already laid out, checklist, and, and so I just wish you the best going forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
I just want to say, a couple of years with you, and I've known you for a lot longer, but it was appreciated to be on the board with you, and maybe now I don't have to worry about being on baseball on time so much.
We also have-
Thank you.
-a little gift for you. A City of Fortuna jacket.
How nice.
So we don't want you to forget us.
Very nice. Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And the bag goes in. And then I'll open public comment for anybody who would like to make a public comment on this or the reorganization of the new council.
So I just want to say, to Mike especially, you know, I wouldn't have the opportu-, I don't think that I would have had the opportunity to meet you and Lisa and interact as much had you not been on the council, even though I'm your supervisor. I have appreciated our friendship and getting to know you both, and I am super excited that you get to have how many ever retirements and, and do whatever you choose in the future without having to be strapped down by council, and appreciate your service to the public and to the City of Fortuna, and wish you well. And then as far as, I just want to say congratulations to Jerry and to Tammy on reelection, and the organization, how the organization goes tonight. You know, I'm supportive however the council sees, but I really appreciated Tammy being mayor and working with her the last year, and a lot of the events and things we've attended, and she's introduced me to a lot of new things in Fortuna, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Casey Day, Chief of Police, Councilmember Losi, Mike. I just wanted to wish you farewell. You and Lisa are dear friends of mine, and just, I appreciate the leadership and the support over the last years, and I know you won't be a stranger. I wish you well.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
I was lucky enough to serve with you for six of your eight years, so I appreciate your dedication to the community. Even when you're not on the council, you're still out there being involved and doing all the things that help make our city awesome, so thank you for your service and good luck. Have fun on those, all those vacations, and remember that I was the one that told you when you moved to Texas, you would be back.
Well, thank you, yes. We were, we were, the first election, yeah, we came on at the same time, so I have a few comments to make unless you-
I'll let, I'll let you speak, it's not your turn.
Heather Stevens, Parks and Recreation Director. I just want to thank you. We've had a short time working together, but I'm very appreciative of your support. When the break-in happened at the pavilion, you were there. You came, you checked it out, you offered support. That was very much appreciated. When we opened the evacuation center in case flooding happened just recently, you were there. You came, you were there, you showed your presence, you showed your support, and of that, I'm very appreciative, and hope to see you in the park, hope to see you on the pickleball court, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? Okay, C and N, we'll close public comment, and would you like to?
I just have a few things, a few comments to make.
This is your last chance.
Yes.
Toughest.
Just a few. First off, I'd really like to thank all of the citizens of Fortuna for their support over the years, both the first term that I served and the second term, and for voting for me, but more importantly, for supporting the City of Fortuna. This can't happen without the support of the citizens. It is extremely important, and I appreciate that support coming from everybody. Next, the employees, I can't say enough about the city employees here in Fortuna. The jobs that everybody does, and that includes all the department heads is just phenomenal. When we have an emergency in town, such as an earthquake, a flood, or whatever, our employees don't have to, they don't have to be called, they respond automatically. They, they don't have to be called, they, they know the job and they do the job without having to be requested to come out. It's, I can't say enough about the city employees, and our department heads are the finest anywhere. We have extremely dedicated folks that lead by example, and that's a definition of, of Council, it's been amazing to work with all of you folks, Sue, with you. I really appreciated it, and on the top of every agenda, there's a little quote, "We may disagree, but we will be respectful of one another," and that's always been the case, and I've really appreciated that. And of course, last, I, I can't say anything without thanking my family. The support that they've given me to be on council for two terms, eight years, is amazing, and I could not have been here through the, through the thousands of hours of meetings in, in eight years, so I, I thank my family very much. Last, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very, very prosperous New Year. That's it.
Thank you.
We should say that we thank Lisa also.
So our next item will be our oath of office. I could invite Mayor Trent and Jerry King to the front of the dais so I can administer the oath.
Okay. I'll wait until after the oath, and then I'll leave.
Okay. You don't have to leave.
Well, I'll leave from here. All right, congratulations, too.
As I mentioned earlier, we're going to do the first sentence separately, and then we'll join them together. This microphone is picking us up, so if you can, you can please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Tammy Trent, do solemnly swear.
I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Jerry D. King, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will, I'm sorry, against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear- That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then you have to turn this way for the public. And then can we, Siobhan, can we just do it separately?
Yes.
Can we just do separately for a minute, too?
Sure.
I mean, you and him and then you and Tammy?
For the record, that's the second time I've done that. The first time was this, the second time.
You have a chair and it's all warmed up.
Okay, next is, I would just like to also thank everybody for all the, you know, the support that I got through the selection. It meant a lot to me. I have really enjoyed being on the council and I'm, so I'm very pleased to be reelected. Our next item is the selection of mayor and mayor pro temp. I would like to ask Mike Johnson to be mayor. He wants to, he has expressed the, you know, the desire to do mayor. I've done it for two years. He's got two years left on his term. So I would like to switch places with Mike, let him become mayor and take over being mayor pro temp. So I would like to actually make that motion to nominate Mike for mayor and myself for mayor pro temp.
I agree wholeheartedly, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy, for running. Thank you for being mayor for the last couple of years. I do, I do think it's a great idea to just have a switch up every couple of years, just to have a fresh perspective on what we're doing. So, yeah, I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call on this or a voice vote?
We'll do a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Conley.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we'll trade spots.
Thank you. Looks like I'm moving. I guess I am.
You are.
Three feet.
Now you gotta be in the hot seat.
Except now we are really out of whack. It's gotta be boy, girl, boy, girl. I always do that with our pictures, too. Has to be boy, girl, boy, girl. It's all good. This chair's too low.
This one's too high. No, this one's perfect for me, actually. Now I have to borrow your agenda.
Okay.
Because I closed it on computer already. Well, first I'd say thank, thank the council for their confidence and support and thank Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp Trent for her nomination. And I just welcome Jerry to the council. Look forward to working with you.
Working with you and Mike and Tammy and Chris.
And Mike's already gone, but I was going to thank him for all his support over the years and staff. I mean, he described it very well. We, the citizens of Fortuna need to know what an awesome staff we do have here. I think the time during the earthquake, the break-ins, the, anytime something happens, they do respond. Our department heads, everything is well taken care of. You know, I just, I'm amazed sometimes at how well-oiled it does run. And the community, the business community especially, for all they do to support things. So I just hope, following in the footsteps of those that have gone before, I think going way back, because I've been involved in the city since March of 1993. And I've seen a lot of people come and go through the council and it's a lot of big shoes back there. So I just hope I can be worthy of the public trust.
You can. Can I say one thing? Mike applauded everyone who does a great job. What our citizens don't realize is they're so quick to criticize when something goes wrong, but they don't call the city and think for everything that goes right. And there's a lot of things that go right in our city, from sidewalks being fixed to potholes being filled, to every little thing that happens. So quick to criticize, but if you just call and say thank you for the things that happen, it means a lot.
That's good to point out, thank you. And I would say that when the earthquake happened, where was what is now the mayor? He was 250 miles away in Napa at a Cal Cities conference. And it felt very weird to be separated like that. And I texted, called, corresponded, I got messages from our city manager, I got a phone call from our police chief keeping me updated. And it wasn't just me, council members from Eureka, both, two council members were there and it felt very strange. And we were the only ones in the room on texting during the conference. So I, I'm not used to that. I'm used to being out in the middle of it. So I just want to thank everyone and at this time, unless you guys have anything you want to say about the reorganization.
We have Amy's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped it.
We got out of.
We got out of order.
Yeah.
So we do have the city managers' report yet.
What about future agenda items?
Oh, man.
Oh, that's.
We're both beating up on him.
Flip the page.
Yeah, have to turn the page, go back. So yes, we do have future agenda items. If there's anything, any of you guys would like to.
I do want to make sure that for the beginning of next, our next meeting, that we do have maybe our committees that we need to choose because we need to reselect some of those. Okay, that's it.
Okay, well, then we have the city managers' report.
All right, fabulous. So your next council meetings are January 6th and January 21st. The third Monday falls on MLK Day, if I'm correct, so you'll be meeting Tuesday, January 21st. Planning Commission is canceled for December 24th. There'll be one January 14th likely. The Rona Community Recreation and Park District, that meeting is scheduled for January 1st and will be canceled because that is a holiday. And so we will schedule another meeting and so that is to be determined. The upcoming Fortuna Business Improvement District is Thursday, January 23rd. And with that, I'll just give you a brief update on some of the things that I have been attending and doing. On December 3rd, I attended an Institute for Local Government meeting on building support for ballot measures and I hope to employ some of their strategies in the near future as we attempt yet another ballot measure. I also attended the Fortuna Chamber Mixer on December 4th. On December 6th and 7th, I was able to attend portions of the CERA Academy, which included a webinar on relationship intelligence and the value of a healthy workplace culture. And I hope to bring this training to department heads in March or April. In addition, I was able to attend sessions on actuarial reports. It was riveting. And then an overview of CERA Risk Services and Resources. On December 9th, met with finance department staff to work out a plan for front office coverage at City Hall. As you may be aware, we have some staffing shortages at the front counter and so we'll have some temporary hours as we work to hire folks and bring them on board. And so the temporary hours beginning Thursday, December 19th are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to noon and 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. and we will be closed on Fridays. And in addition, folks will be able to make payments via online or there is a telephone number that they can call and all of this information is on our website. Also, on December 9th, met with local jurisdictions and our consultant to continue to work on the franchise negotiations and the information received from ecology. So we continue to work on that. And on December 10th, myself and finance and public works met with Enterprise to review the possibility of moving to Enterprise Fleet Management Services. Many of our vehicles are of significant age and so we're exploring other opportunities to hopefully bring some savings to the city. On December 13th, I met with the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual Ad Hoc Committee and we worked to finalize that document. And so this should be before your council on January 21st. And then last but not least, I was able to judge the Al Gray lighted parade in the pouring freezing rain last Friday. So that was also wonderful as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for? Nope? Well, that brings us to our city council reports. I brought my agenda up, which runs consecutively on one continuous page. So I got it back together. And our first council report is from Councilmember Conley.
Thank you. We had an executive red act meeting during the day last week. It was just a quick one. There is no other meeting in December because it falls right before Christmas time. Other than that, it's been an eventful December already with some heavy rains and some big earthquakes, so let's just calm that down and enjoy our holidays and everybody get to stay in their house and warm and dry.
Okay, well, we don't have Councilmember Lousie here, so we will go to Councilmember Mobley.
The only thing I have to report is the ad hoc meeting that we did with Mayor Johnson and our city manager, who has done an amazing job. I will say it every single time. She takes the ideas we put down and runs with them and gets them right back to us. So I am looking forward to going over those upgrades that we did to the procedures manual.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Pro Temp Trent.
I also got to enjoy the stormy weather out there judging the floats. We had some really nice floats out there, though, so it was kind of hard to choose between some of them, but I guess it was fun. A little cold. But I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Safe New Year and, you know, see everybody the beginning of next year for another new adventurous year. Chief was also at that event, too, out there in the rain with all of us, but. Yeah. He came up with that idea, let's go take pictures and come back in here where it's nice and warm and judge. So that was, that was a good idea. So anyway, that's all I have to report.
Okay, well, thank you. Actually, I did do some work. I made notes and everything while I was in Napa. And we got a, first off, we got a overview of the state budget and interestingly enough, how they think about the budget. So this year, they're predicting a $2 billion deficit, but the state calls that balanced. So, and the Legislative Analyst Office says that this $2 billion deficit was higher than, was even with higher than expected revenue coming in short term, but the expectation is for a 20-plus billion dollar deficit in '26 and '27. And those who are, pay attention to the amount of bills that come out of the legislature will be happy to know that every legislator had their amount of allowable bills cut by 15. So now they can only bring 35 bills to the forward instead of 50. So that'll protect a little bit. And that's just the highlights there. We also looked at setting priorities for what the League of California Cities is going to work on this year with priorities, which number one is protect local revenues. Because we know in times of deficit, the state looks everywhere for where they're going to fill that deficit and they look to what can they hold back from local agencies, whether it's a city or a county. They're all on the chopping block. The second thing is strengthen critical infrastructure. And we all know our roads, bridges and waters and wastewater systems, they're getting older and we've done, the City of Fortuna has a schedule in their capital improvement program and they keep up on those things, whether it's changing clay sewers for PVC or upgrading water lines and capacity or the treatment plant or the water treatment plant. So, and then the last thing is strengthen climate change resiliency and disaster preparedness. Those three things are the priorities this year. So that was from my trip to Napa. One of the other things is while, as I mentioned and we already know, we had an earthquake and while, another thing I did was get a email the same day in the afternoon from Alex Service, our curator at the museum. And she updated the historical commission members, which I'm a liaison to, and reported in that there was, she didn't recognize any structural damage from the earthquake. They did have a couple of places where there were some cracks in the drywall and they had some things tip over. Unfortunately, two of them were part of the Christmas decorations in the museum and they were flower arrangements that are not arranged anymore. And they're, they've probably repaired that already by now. But another thing I wanted to report on is this weekend in Burlington, at where the headquarters and the visitor's center is for the Humboldt Redwoods State Park, is a talk presentation by Susan O'Hara, who is the Chair of the Fortuna Historical Commission and an author with Alex Service of a number of books. And she's presenting on the '64 flood. This is the 60th anniversary. And so she's presenting on that, a presentation at 2:00 at the visitor's center at Humboldt Redwoods State Park. Did they, did they move it? Because I'm, okay, because I got this off of the. No, I'm not going to discredit you because it could be. I will look that up. And I recommend that others look it up because. It's Scotia. It is, okay. Humboldt Redwoods Interpretive Association missed the bus. So it is at Scotia Lodge, which I was just there for the Christmas house tour and it was decorated awesome. So that's all I have to report at this time.
I have one more thing. I'd like to add something to the agenda, future agenda items, and that is setting goals for the city council to set goals with the city manager, not the next meeting, but maybe, but one of the meetings in February. Because I did notice in the policies that it's supposed to be every two years and we have not done that in a while, so I think it might be a good idea, especially where we didn't get our measure to pass this year. We might need to look at some stuff.
Can I pipe in there? It's an, it's an interesting thing that's in your council policies and procedures manual. Goals are good, but usually there's also vision that's established and you, you move, you take that vision and then you go to goals and you start. you take that vision and then you go to goals and you start working from there. And so it, it strikes me that we may want to do something a little bigger than just working on goals. And so if your council's open to that, I would like to expand and maybe have a more, have a special meeting where we can have a bigger conversation about where you want to see the city head, in what direction.
A workshop possibly.
A workshop.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second...
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.